I'd like to call the February 27th, 2019 Comprehensive Plan Work Session to Order. Heather, could you call the role?
Mr. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Cleat.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
So today, our work is to be updated by the major institutions in town and we'll be receiving presentations from both the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation and the college. So CW is up first?
My name is Kate. Vice President of Strategic Communications for Colonial Williamsburg. I was asked to talk a little bit about what we do at the college. I've been here several years. Colonial Williamsburg has sought to envision itself, understand where it would fit in the career path just in Colonial Williamsburg in actual competition. Twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, we were about twenty seventeen when we were in significantly restructuring as corporate rent. Now it's a streamlined, a lot of operations. Twenty eighteen, we still here understanding who we are and what you're seeing now in advertising that's somehow individually or we are being streamlined more than this that we just have to guess. We're looking at how to understand what you want going forward. How we're like us previously, I think, in that position for this twenty sixteen. Going forward, we will be focused on the consumer, asking like the consumer wants. With the idea to increase the level of attention to that, by not asking people what they would like, did that hit, came out, come along? By five. Throughout the four years, we've been staying on areas including Williamsburg and you're not looking so often. You said, you're to find your way around with the now of Williamsburg out or you're having this. So we're here, we're in, we're here to stay, process in place to bring Wi-Fi on campus one. The series that is directed for is our, working on a strategic plan for the foundation that the page of twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six and the quarter that happens to be the anniversary of the revolution. Also, happens to be. Twenty Williamsburg twenty seven. So there is a people are putting in quite a tier board to work, to work, to work with the work. Yeah. Operations. Twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. Year increases in attendance. The dismon, that has been going on for years. The mid eighties, late eighties, we started seeing, raising the dismon, did it do this, did it today? About five hundred and fifty to eighty thousand visitors. We, hopefully, with the fact that the seven weeks, we had somewhere around, we're going to do the next eight years. Now, as you said, the time, visitation declines and sort of grows, and I think that's the most healthy way to grow. The archaeological. Beginning the excavation of what we call Custis City recently began, this is an area of Colonial Williamsburg, bringing back the active research, the focus of what we do, of these Custis City, the area of the majority, the areas that at one point held, there is a, our.
John Custis the fourth.
So he, sure. There's a big archaeological day, that's a one year project, that we will be involving the public with, that we'll be talking to people. This year. This year, we. We gave the level one property status, it's a national recognition because of the care and the creativity that we have on trees. If you move around the property, you'll see signs that explain what the trees are. There's a difference. It's a part that we work on right here now, that we work on right here now, to the product of, because it is certainly a market solution that we have in the future. And. Finally, the foundation itself. Department. Is looking at high assets, particularly the business center, and how far as like fix it to, to see what the future of this is, and the cost of it. There are a lot of ideas, a lot of thoughts, nothing to point out yet, but we have a varied opportunity up there, to support it, with the assets and it is, among those many areas that we look at, we're looking for future. How do you?
A quick one, Elaine. Yeah, as I say, we can take individual questions now, but then I think probably all, our overall plan is to have your whole presentation and then we can have a broader discussion as well, but please go ahead.
Very quick, I just want to clarify the CW campus, does that include the CW support area where Palace Farms is? So that's, so the Wi-Fi will also go in there?
Maybe. So here, these are defined by.
Okay. Just curious for the future event space, that's all.
So that's a free Wi-Fi for everybody that walks in, whether they have a ticket or not?
We don't have a ticket, so.
But I mean, but I mean, they won't need a code or something?
Probably, but we're. Possibility of. Happy to say, secure Wi-Fi, that you, that would be a lot of this. Hi, Mr. Vice President of the office. For the past five years. Royal Williamsburg has spent possibly nineteen million dollars in capital improvements. There's projects. For different categories, preservation and restoration, some examples of those, by the Norman, Martin Smith, and Stuart, Robert Towne, Bush, and the room that I should describe. The US makes a new hallways that we have put on, including the River Lounge, which is a military outreach program, and we have over a hundred and fifty thousand guests as of the end of December. Our hallway, the other is Astro, and Muscat Range, where some efforts to provide some new activities for our guests, and icing, which is just, renovation. Projects. Projects. Restaurants, the River, the River Water Restaurant, and Palace, as well as industry shop restaurant, and some retail spaces, possibly. The next stage, most prominent is the Duke of Gloucester Street, which we continue to work at, and we're set for the future, and just recently, the Palace, that the Palace means, we have included evening projects, and the flyer, the flyer that includes some brands and lists, and now the flyer, and hospitality projects, to, to help bring in the room rights, and provide services for our guests, to try to attract, even through the. Navigation. Which allows us to regain. Five star reading, as well as receive a. Five dining. For large and restaurants. Five restaurants, and room renovations, the room hotel repositioning, the home workshop. Off course. As well as the. The head mansion. I get it, sir. One of the primary ones that does the expansion, are the Wi-Fi, which we continue with, and secure our system, phone switches, and also fiber extension. In the next five years, we anticipate that we will spend possibly three million dollars in capital expenses. Categories will be similar to the ones that I just mentioned, and in. We. We will improve in expansion project, and we are bringing with it, in the spring of twenty twenty, we are the software. Also provide. Some new learning experiences, and shows, logistics for our, for our guests. Option or direction that we want. The landscape is to pursue, allow us to, on a wheel, which we're well on our way, we anticipate that we will achieve that, probably, mid-year. And that will just expand the number of trees that we have, and provide some other offerings for guests that are searching for. And then for that innovation, to our room, and as a top priority, as we go through the future years, including the preparation of the iconic gardens throughout the story. In addition to capital work, I do want to mention that we have put a significant amount of work into this sort of building, primarily. The exterior, the public, so we, we, in the past five years, we have repaired the part of the asylum, and painted the exterior full of three hundred and ninety-one buildings, and that's been passed on, we continue. Do you have to state? The, the, the store area, going further, cleaning as well as. Questions? How's that talking, Vice President? We'll say, we're coming, first of all, thanks, all the support that you've given us, for the last few years, that we've done a lot of things in Merchant Square, and around Merchant Square, I appreciate everything, all the support that you've provided, just personally, and comments, and, and the board. In the past five years, we opened six or seven new retail sites and restaurants, which this, and this takes us through June of this year. So Fox, with a very French twist, Philly Cafe, where there's a new comp shop, we're opening on the approach to, I'm not sure, within October, Paris, we're all, and this slide is open in June, the shoe rack, and Lincoln Library, Tasty, we'll open up three blocks. And importantly, for us, and for I think for the city, these six or seven locations, let me add one, I think, up to the slide, a couple of, she, French twist alcohol in the past three years. And importantly, I think for the city, these six or seven new locations will generate about seven hundred million dollars in sales annually, for the city, the city really is working at a little over one million dollars in state and local taxes, sales taxes. Other activities, in both State and Merchant Square, we're also with the economic development authority, as we've added the Mel Musser Restaurant, they work with us to help us track that. Tenants. And have constructed a new canyon outside of Mel Musser, also working in the area to be at all, and. Or. Construction of a panel outside of that location as well. Couple of years ago, we had. New, 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 Merchant Square, that became a place for photo ops, very proud of that, and we can't, or pass that in time between Thanksgiving, and the year, we're off saying, families standing in front of getting their photo taken. We've added a deck of lighting to the trees, with the buzzer in Merchant Square, and last summer, we moved the Summer Breeze concerts to a long, there are museums, for Colonial Williamsburg. In the next few months, two, eighteen months, we'll be adding additional tenants in Merchant Square that we aren't able to talk about names, about what, at this point, but I can just describe what's coming, twenty-four hundred square foot ladies fashion shop, twenty-five hundred square foot ladies and men's fashion, another coffee centric restaurant, a relaxed family restaurant, and a new retail concept, and then retaining the concept that will be going into, will be going into the. This. Space. And we're also working on the plan to enhance the landscaping on the lawn, and from a character restaurant. Over the next one to two years, we'll be assessing potential opportunities for. Expansion. What the potential is for that. Lots. Potential versions and restaurants that attack us on either basis, that want to be downtown in this world, and we're running space issues with a lot of space to accommodate. We'll continue to assess the future plan for Filling Square, we're in discussions now with the developer, who we look at, has a lot of plans for the Filling Building, which Filling Building will plan to be first for retail, and second for residential development. We'll continue to work with the city assessing the future needs of downtown. And this generally, we're assessing all of mine, which includes landowners and potential future for development, or for our future needs going forward.
Okay, so I think that we, you know, in wanting to have a discussion, I mean, you all have microphones in front of you too, so you can make them live, so people who are recording this can capture that, and we can just have an open discussion versus having people come back and stand, it seems like much more reasonable, hopefully. Okay, so I open the floor, anyone who wants to start with specific questions, please go ahead.
I've got one, about the, we've talked about the, you know, the placemaking and the people who, the people who come to Colonial Williamsburg expecting, you know, a certain, a certain type of atmosphere, and I was at the Antiques Forum this last weekend and heard a lot of feedback about the redesign inside the lodge especially, but also about the inn, including things like, well, it feels like you're at the Marriott at O'Hare Airport when you walk in, and I'm wondering what was driving the redesign of that, was that outside, was that Marriott, or were you, you mentioned, Mr. Cross, asking customers what they want, I mean, what was, what was driving all of that redesign there?
This is at the inn?
At the lodge.
At the lodge. There are requirements from Marriott that the hotels is, does need to meet, so there's certain requirements to be, to be an autograph signature part of Marriott, so there are requirements that Marriott makes us, or requires us to meet.
They mandated what's there now, is that?
Excuse me.
They mandated what's there now, the rugs, the upside down trees, and that sort of thing?
I couldn't tell you details of it, I'm not in the hotel there, I have been involved with it enough to know that there's certain requirements that they do, I couldn't give you the details of that.
Would Paul Scott know?
Paul Scott would probably know more details on that.
Thank you.
I've got one. So I know there's a great deal of effort put into bringing visitors from out of town to enjoy Colonial Williamsburg and all it has to offer, which is certainly an excellent course to take, but I also wonder, what are some of the efforts that you expect to be making to really engage and embrace the locals, who I think are tremendous ambassadors, who can go on Facebook and social media and talk about all the wonderful things they've experienced here in town, and they just went to this restaurant, they just did that, and they went ice skating, what are some of the things that really reach out to engage the locals, who I think are the best ambassadors for Colonial Williamsburg out there?
Totally agree, and this year, we have a plan to engage the locals, in a little bit different way than maybe we have in the past. This year, our marketing is focused on three distinct regions, we have a destination region, which you could look at as DC and Raleigh area, where we'll have a destination message. The Richmond Hampton Roads region will focus primarily on the art museums and the opportunities that people have to visit those two facilities. Locally, the greater Williamsburg area, the historic triangle area, it's really about community, it's advertising the tavern specials, it's talking about evening programming, mainly to let people know that we are alive after five, there's a lot to do during the day, and we certainly would encourage anyone who is interested in Colonial Williamsburg to purchase a Good Neighbor Pass, they're inexpensive, and it gets you a full experience, but after five o'clock, when the historic area closes, there's a lot going on, not just in our hospitality offerings, so we'll be talking about that, advertising in local newspaper, radio stations, things like that, to let people know that there is life at night in Colonial Williamsburg.
The locals also order of what goes on in Merchant Square, so the things that we're looking at will add reasons to come downtown, so I'm not, we're not trying to bring new things to Merchant Square that's gonna, we're only gonna have one size pie to, for everyone to share, we want to grow the pie, and so we're, the things that we're looking at, I think will give locals more reasons to spend time downtown.
Thank you.
So the Site Plan Review Committee and the Planning Commission approved the Special Use Permit for the Palace Farms area in 2018, late 2018, and that expires, of course, in at the end of 2020, could you all just update us about the process there and any recruitment or for the work that's done on Palace Farms?
We're still assessing exactly what we would be able to do there yet, so we don't have any answers on what the plans will be, so it's gonna be, I think, several months before we land on exactly what we're gonna be doing.
Is there a goal to try to end by summer, and maybe work for that, or next year?
It's doubtful that we'll have anything going on there this summer.
Thank you.
Heather?
Could you elaborate a little bit on the Arboretum Program? I don't know how that works, from Level One to Level Two, is it digital anyway, can you?
It is digital, there's, we have to have presence on the website, also, if you go up to, the Level Two will have new labels on the trees, where you can go up and you can actually pull it, information up on your phone, or a handheld device, so that you can get the information right there, as you're standing at the tree, in a digital format, so there are, there are portions, it's the number of trees that you have, and woody species, it's the way that you label, it's a presence on, on your website, as well as a tour of the arboretum, which, which we are working on as well, so we do anticipate that we will have all that in place this year.
Sure, I know you can't provide probably many details on potential development opportunities of your other parcels in the city, but in the conversations that you're having about them, are you seeing zoning changes that might need to happen on those parcels, or businesses or things that would need special use permits from us that we should be thinking about on our horizon?
Probably yes to all of that, we're not far enough along in discussions to know which parcels and what changes might have to be requested, but I would imagine that, I mean, for those types of things.
Just to follow up on that, I think, you know, as you know, we're in the middle of updating our comprehensive plan, which is our sort of policy roadmap for land use, the more of those kinds of adjustments that we can make while we're doing that, the better, just as a policy standpoint, but in terms of avoiding the appearance of, well, I'll just leave it at that, the more that we can do now, the better, because it does govern our decision-making over the next five years, and it also allows us to advocate on behalf of good projects more effectively, I think is the way that I would put it, so we don't necessarily need specifics about individual parcels, but if there are aspects of the way things are zoned, or any of our planning regulations that we can deal with now, things, changes that you feel would be useful for us to make, or if there are particular things that you see as essential for us to preserve, that we, you know, things that are working that we might break if we don't know, that we really shouldn't break them, I don't anticipate anything in particular, but if there are things that you feel like are really working well, we need to make sure that we continue to do, again, now's the time, essentially the next.
Yes.
Three months or so.
And I think that is, after Justin and now Jeffrey's comments, is a good point, place for me to jump in, I do have some questions about specific points in your slides, but since I do not want those to be seen as critical points, I'm just inquiring, I did want to start my comments, but, and then return to them after my questions, and that, my overarching comment is a comment of, you know, what can we do to help you, I mean, obviously Colonial Williamsburg's success for the historic area, for the commercial zones, the hotels as a whole, is a very important part of the city, and, you know, so I do want to get back to that point, not only for the Planning Commission, but for those of us who sit up here, you know, it's Planning Commission, representative to EDA, you know, the ARB, I represent Planning Commission on the Tourism Development Fund that's coming out, and so it's a much more broadly written question of how can we help, and I do want to come back to that point, after some questions about specific slide points, if I can. Just some general comments, some have already been captured, when you were mentioning the Wi-Fi, and whether it's gonna be free, or whether it's gonna be a token, or something like that, there is, you know, obviously that middle ground that you have to register and give your email address and things like that, but I think that the city has promoted having free Wi-Fi in the downtown spaces that are city-controlled, and I think having a seamless ability, you know, capture some data for the marketing purposes, but have that seamless ability for people to get around, because if you're on vacation and you're having to use a lot of your own data, you don't want to be wanting to leave to go back to your hotel, which has free Wi-Fi, because you can't get it in this area, so it seems like, as a marketing advantage, it would be worthwhile, you know, capture some data, but keep it open there. I did have a question, I guess, just amplifying on Justin's comment about the visitor center in Palace Farms, you know, that's a new venue that we approved in the past six months, you had a better date, you actually looked it up, but I think that we really would like, if there's possibility for that, in moving forward, I think we all see that as a, as a great spot to think about. With regards to the arboretum, this Level Two designation, when I think of arboretums, I really think of like wedding venues and other kinds of things that happen, versus just simply the trees, I mean, and obviously we have lots of that already at Colonial Williamsburg, places to get married, but, you know, are we thinking about it as an arboretum, as we think of other things that are arboretums, like, you know, the arboretum in the Boston Gardens, you know, that kind of place, I mean, these things are distinct on their own, and tour, and I guess my sense of what I was hearing, you're saying tours, I thought it was like a digital tour, versus actual a person tour kind of thing, just broader, I mean, that's a whole other market slice, people who actually do go to arboretums and that kind of tourism, which you, I don't know whether that's part of your bigger plan or something. I guess I was wondering if you all had any evaluation of how the move of Summer Breeze from Duke of Gloucester Street to the Art Museum Lawn, how that worked, I see some, I see moving forward, so maybe I'll hesitate my comments there, yeah, please.
And I've just submitted to Carolyn this week, the supplemental permit, special use permit, for that, and I've given her some statistics that we shared, I think I called it in my letter, a smashing success, and with Summer Breeze on Duke of Gloucester Street for decades, average attendance was probably three to four hundred, on the museum lawn, average attendance was, most nights was between one and two thousand, and in several cases, close to two thousand, on the Fourth of July especially, we probably had five thousand people out there, and we. On the museum lawn, average attendance was, most nights was between 1 and 2,000, and in several cases, close to 2,000. On the Fourth of July especially, we probably had 5,000 people out there and we had two stages set up, one for a military band, four o'clock in the afternoon, then the regular Summer Breeze concert later in the evening. It also allowed attendees to just turn their chairs around and watch the fireworks. So that worked out really, really well. We had probably 20,000 attendees for the entire season. Lots of food sales, I put some statistics on that and information I sent to Carolyn. I think lots of incremental sales, FMB sales in Merchant Square itself as a result of more people coming downtown as well. So very much a successful move.
And to follow on that, you know, I mentioned a few minutes ago, the local push to form a community with the Williamsburg residents, to have Colonial Williamsburg talk a little more about what is available after hours. And with the Summer Breeze Concert Series moving closer to the historic area, it makes even more of a connection between, you know, what people can do in the greater Williamsburg area while they're also visiting Colonial Williamsburg. So I think it's a win on that front as well.
Also provides a great connection between Merchant Square and the art museums. Those are gonna be opening later this year. Soft opening, we'll also be opening by mid-June-ish, the promenade that's being constructed between, at the back of the Public Hospital in that alley, a beautiful promenade that's gonna be, back there, we'll be able to take advantage of that as well.
So then no desire to move Summer Breeze to Palace Farms? The synergies to keep it down there, yeah?
I would never move Summer Breeze to Palace Farms.
And so, I mean, part of the statistics of the, I mean, we didn't previously have to go through security to go to Summer Breeze. So the numbers were amorphous, sort of back-of-the-envelope kinds of numbers. Now that you have to go through security, you know, you have a funnel through which to count the numbers. So it really seems like this summer, in terms of having real data summer over summer, is gonna also be important in terms of the programming moving forward. On your last slide, you talked about expansion of Merchant Square. So I interpret that as like physical expansion, like new buildings that would be part of the Merchant Square portfolio of retail offerings? Is that what that means?
There's potential for that. Think about the parking lot P6, our power paid lot. There's, there are plans that go back 20 years or more for development of that lot with a parking structure in the center of the lot and additional retail restaurants, offices around the periphery. So that's, I think that is where an opportunity for expansion is. And we're exploring that.
So thanks for clarifying those parts for me. So that brings me back, at least for me, to sort of reiterate where I started, is like, you know, what can we do to help? And obviously, we're not expecting that you have more details in your PowerPoint, which was fantastic to get, I appreciate that. But it is important and would be helpful for you if there are areas that you, with regard to future land, you see other options for, that could be part of this current discussion and/or if some areas you see need to be preserved or protected for the future, that being part of this discussion is helpful because it's going to, you know, lay the foundation for zoning changes that will happen over the next five years, which would aid opportunities, or protection of certain areas, which will alternatively protect certain areas versus it being always a special use permit. And that's costly on your side, as well as, you know, perceptions of potential favoritism or other political issues, which we really try to not be engaged in very much here when we're thinking about the land use issue. So whatever you can share or communicate in other public hearings as we have public discussions moving forward would be really helpful. Other questions? Thomas, a people? Carolyn? Oh, you're gonna, okay, well, then, I guess, I thank you for coming and thank you for your presentation and, you know, please, I think we have a pretty good line of communication with you all, since we see you almost every month in some form or capacity, of all the different boards I talked about that are engaged here. And so we'll just keep the communication open. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a change of things that are happening, and once Carolyn gets that going, we'll meet our new executive director of the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation, Sean Hughes. It's the first time I've seen you in front of this body, so welcome. And... Yeah, wherever we can be comfortable.
All right. Good evening, thanks for having me. It is the first time I've appeared in front of any of the city, in official capacity. I met with Carolyn and Aaron previously and I've talked with the mayor and a couple of council members informally. I got here six months ago on Friday, Labor Day, from Charleston, South Carolina, and took over at the Real Estate Foundation. As I talk about the next several years at William &amp; Mary and how that aligns to your comprehensive plan update, I do want to frame it in the context of the goals in pursuit of William &amp; Mary's mission. And those are to attract outstanding students from diverse backgrounds, developing a diverse faculty that is recognized the world over for teaching and research excellence, providing a challenging liberal arts and sciences undergraduate program, offering high-quality professional and graduate programs that produce leaders, instilling appreciation for the human condition, the public well-being and commitment to lifelong learning, and using scholarship and skills of the faculty and students to further knowledge and understanding. All the capital projects and physical infrastructure I'm gonna talk about tonight are all platforms in pursuit of those goals. I think it's been about six years since we've given an update to the city. Since then, lots happened on campus. We've had a pretty busy string of capital projects, and I'll give you an update on where we're at with enrollment as well. So our current enrollment this year is 6,377 undergraduate students, 2,450 graduate students. Enrollment's stable at the college and we anticipate it continuing to be stable. 65% of our population are Virginians, 35% are from out of state and they hail from around the country and internationally as well. The full-time faculty stands at 687 across all of our programs. And in case all haven't heard, we have a new president at the college. Dr. Rowe took over effective July 1 and is notable for, aside from her many other accomplishments, the first woman in the 320-some years that we've had leading the university. And she's certainly started with quite a lot of progress. Since we last spoke, since you guys got the last update from the college, we've had, as I mentioned, a number of facility projects. Some of them, I'll detail here. We have completed 11 fraternity houses along Ucropt Way. We've completed ISC3 or the Phase 3 of the Integrated Science Center. We've renovated multiple dorms on campus. In 2015, our Board of Visitors approved a campus master plan. This is notable for a couple of reasons. One, it's available on our website, anyone can go take a look at it. And two, if you were to look at it and then look at my presentation and what I'm gonna talk about, we're executing on our master plan from 2015. So no real surprises if you're following along with our master plan and if you want to see what's coming down in the future, that'll show you. We've, in addition, we've renovated several classroom buildings as well. The Real Estate Foundation has developed a couple of properties, Tribe Square on Richmond Road and Richmond Hall, the former Days Inn on Richmond Road. And most recently, we completed construction and opened the Shankman Jewish Center on Jamestown Road. The most recent capital project that we finished for the college is Landrum Hall. And I have a couple of pictures here just to give you a flavor for the type of buildings that William &amp; Mary is putting together when we renovate a building like this. Landrum Hall was originally built in 1958. It's a 221-bed facility, approximately 60,000 square feet. It just opened this spring and students have moved in there. The scope of the project included modernization of the building systems, those are your life safety systems, your mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, as well as interior improvements. This is the lobby. You can tell that we've done certainly a modernization of the interiors while keeping the beautiful historic exteriors. Another shot of the lobby, a typical bathroom in a dorm, much nicer than the dorms I remember from my college days. A typical shot of the commons room. And then an example of some of the site improvements we've done, as well as the landscaping. Projects that are currently under construction at the college are here. The West Utilities Plant is a, is an infrastructure project at the corner of Ucropt and Landrum, right behind Schwem Library. It's about a 12,000-square-foot facility that houses boilers and chillers to serve that portion of campus. And that'll allow us to service our future capital projects on that side of the campus as well. The Alumni Center renovation and expansion, I'll talk more about that in a minute. That's, of course, on Richmond Road. Fine Arts Phases 1 and 2, I'll also talk a little bit more detail in just a minute. And those are PBK in the surrounds on Jamestown Road. The Ren Ramp Project is an ADA compliance project that we're doing for the Christopher Ren Building, producing an architecturally appropriate ramp to the Ren Building for access. The Reeveley Garden is an interesting project, is an outdoor project between Ewell, Washington and Jefferson Halls. It's interesting because it was originally part of a 1926 campus plan that was designed and never built. And so we're implementing a reimagination of that, of that project, and that'll be complete in the fall. And we're partnering with the Garden Club of Virginia on that project, so it's already circulation space on campus for pedestrians. It'll be a much nicer circulation space on campus going forward. As mentioned, I'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about the two prominent projects that really front, face the city on Jamestown and Richmond Roads. The first one is the Alumni Center renovation and expansion, also known as the Alumni House renovation and expansion. We're targeting a completion of that project on spring 2020. That is an approximately 33,000-square-foot expansion of the current, or of the historic Breithouse, our current alumni house. There's an image on the screen that'll show what it looks like when it's complete. It's, the addition, that's the 3,300 square feet, will be a seamless integration to the architecture that's already there, similar materials, similar height, similar form. We will also be constructing some exterior site improvements, as you can see, for vehicular and pedestrian circulation, as well as some landscape improvements. And on the existing structure, we will be replacing the building systems again and upgrading the building systems there. It's an important project. It'll give, it'll give the ability to host large lectures and larger seated functions in that area of campus where we couldn't before. Fine Arts Phases 1 and 2. These are the projects along Jamestown Road, almost across the street from where Indian Springs Road meets Jamestown Road. The Phi Beta Kappa Hall is the anchor there. We're targeting completion for these two phases, summer of 2021. This is actually Phase 2. I realized I put them out of order when I sent in my presentation. So this is Phase 2. This is what PBK will ultimately look like. Phase 2 is approximately 109,000 square feet, so there'll be an addition there. The facility will co-locate dance with theater and speech in Phi Beta Kappa. And when finished, we will gain, in addition to some additional classrooms and seminar rooms, we'll gain 100-seat student laboratory in those subjects. We'll gain a 250-seat black box theater, and we will have a renovated 499-seat main theater. Phase 1, and if you look to the right here, you'll see just the edge of Phase 1, which is the new music building, which will go, if you're on Jamestown Road looking at PBK, to the right of PBK. The music building is, represents about 75,000 square feet of new construction. Within the music building, we'll have teaching and performance space, 15 new teaching studios, 33 practice rooms, a 60-person choral practice facility, a 45-seat instrumental practice facility, 125-seat recital hall and a 450-seat recital hall. Very, very nice addition in the arts on campus there. And again, expected to deliver both of these in the summer of 2021. Parking. With all these new capital projects, we're also gonna be studying parking. We've hired a third-party parking consultant and we have a study ongoing that is a comprehensive study of the entire campus and takes into account our capital programs, both recent and upcoming. And we expect that study to come back in summer 2019 and there'll be additional activity from the college in planning parking and reconfiguring parking as that study comes in. We have several projects in pre-planning. The Muscarelli Museum renovation and expansion is in pre-planning. The Sadler Center West Edition and the Integrated Science Center Phase 4, or ISC4, as it's called on campus, is also in pre-planning. A little bit more about Sadler Center West, so that's a 46,000-square-feet addition to the Sadler Student Center. If you were looking at an aerial map of campus, it wraps almost a little bit towards the, it's across from the new Wellness Center and it wraps towards Zabel Stadium. And it'll consolidate the Student Affairs operations in what's become the Student Affairs heart of campus there in the center. ISC4 is a project to build 124,000 new square feet for mathematics, computer science, kinesiology and design engineering. It also involves a 10,000-square-foot renovation of the existing facility where we bring the two buildings together to allow for that pass-through and circulation space. And we're expecting that late in 2022. Future campus master plan related projects. So these are all projects that are planned in the next five to seven years in accordance with our campus master plan. And I just wanted to talk briefly about each one of them to give you an idea of what's coming up. The Schwem Library renovations, what that is, is a ground floor renovation to create a collaborative learning center. So that'll be a nice, nice needed renovation of the ground floor Schwem. Ewell Hall is a building systems renovation replacement, interior finishes replacement to keep us going forward there. Fine Arts Phase 3 is a renovation of Andrews Hall that will house arts and art history. So that's in the rear of PBK. That's upcoming. The Campus Center renovation, that's the, for the folks who aren't aware of Campus Center, that's right there across from Colonial Williamsburg, across from Barrett's and the parking lot there. That is a dining services improvement and auxiliary services improvements there. For anyone who's been in it, it's an older building, it's been added on to a couple times. We're gonna adjust that. We're gonna continue our program of dorms, dorm renovations, which is to repair and upgrade code compliance building systems, et cetera. Washington Hall, get a building systems renovation replacement, as well as interior improvements. Kaplan Arena gets a building systems improvements and a space utilization improvement. We can do better with the space in there, so we're gonna work on that. And Jones and Morton's Hall will be torn down and there'll be a new general academic facility put in its place, a combination of the two spaces that's more functional for what William &amp; Mary needs going forward. And then the last one, I forgot, a Dare Hall. Dare Hall is a renovation and reconfiguration of that space primarily for campus recreation per our campus master plan. And the Commons Dining Hall, that's a replacement of that building with a much more functional and efficient facility to meet the dining needs of the students going forward. And I'll take your questions.
One quick one. JBT or Dillard Complex on Ironbound Road? What are the plans for that? I understand it's kind of beyond...
I'm sorry?
The buildings, I understand, are kind of beyond use. Is that...
Those are, yeah. So the most recent activity out at Dillard, we've constructed a scene shop as we move around our theater folks. And then there is some longer-term planning going on. Those buildings will likely not be reused.
Are they gonna come down, you think?
I would, not being an active part of that planning group, I would suggest that they'll probably come down. I can get you a firm answer, though.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Please.
William &amp; Mary Hall, as I think of it...
William &amp; Mary Hall, as I think of it, I saw my first concert there at Kansas, and I enjoyed a number of concerts along the way, and they used to bring a lot of people to town. Colonial Williamsburg is building a venue to try and bring people to town. And so I wonder if that's something that's on the list of things to do. And if not, why not? It seems to be a great venue for, not massive concerts, but pretty good concerts and events. And so I think it would also expose the college to a number of people and give them another reason to come and see it, and they might fall in love with it the way many people have. And along those lines, also, with all the construction projects going on, will William &amp; Mary Hall's parking lot continue to be a staging area for construction for an indefinite period of time? Or do you think maybe there's a likelihood that they'll actually build a staging area for all the construction and utilize the parking lot as a parking lot?
So fair questions. And as the real estate guy, I don't have some real solid, specific answers for you on the mechanics of our construction. I can get them for you and report back to the commission, and I'll be happy to do so. But for the foreseeable future, I would imagine that we'll continue to use William &amp; Mary parking lot as we are.
Any thoughts on the concerts and venues and events?
So personally, all for it. But we haven't identified a project that I'm aware of in the immediate upcoming capital projects for that building. But I can talk to Sam Jones and see if there's been other discussions. And again, forgive me, I'm fairly new to the college, so I haven't been involved in a lot of the in-depth stuff over the last several years as they've put this capital plan together. But I can report back to you.
I would think just using it as is for different events, and I know they have the East Coast cheerleading competitions there and things like that. So the more that building is utilized, the more Williamsburg and the college are exposed to people from out of town.
Sure.
It's a great venue.
So I can say, along those lines, that our conference and events folks have been taking a look around campus and reformulating how we do conferences and events on campus. And I know they're looking to increase use in some areas. So I'll bring them into the conversation as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Very exciting projects. As an alumnus and a neighbor, I'm really vitally interested in these. But the, most of the construction that I see in the renovations are on state property and are not actually subject to city compliance. Can you talk about some that are with the Real Estate Foundation?
Sure. So those would be all Real Estate Foundation or William &amp; Mary Foundation properties.
Alvin Foundation, too, isn't William &amp; Mary endowed?
So there's, yes, so there's, so the William &amp; Mary Foundation is, you know, that endowment piece. And then the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation is, I guess, the new kid on the block since 2006. And the Real Estate Foundation is the one that owns the Shanken Jewish Center and Tribe Square and Richmond Hall. So, and I can speak mostly for the Real Estate Foundation, but I have had chats with the William &amp; Mary Foundation as well. And I would imagine that for the foreseeable future, the use that you see is the use that we'll continue on with. So specific to the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation properties, the Shanken Jewish Center is going to continue to serve as it is a brand-new building, as a Jewish student center. The Tribe Square facility on Richmond Road at 249 Richmond Road, as you know, we have Chick-fil-A in there. I anticipate filling the remaining three spaces within a year, and I think those will be some different uses than have been there prior, but all good for the city and the college. And Richmond Hall, I believe, will continue to be a dorm for the foreseeable future. And that's related to our dorm renovation program. We need a place to put students when we take a dorm offline to renovate it. And as far as the Endowment Foundation, the William &amp; Mary Foundation, they primarily own the White Houses along Jamestown Road, and those will continue to be utilized as office space for the foreseeable future.
Okay. Because part of the master plan is to replace those with college buildings.
So...
Also, it was to replace, I think, the Campus Center that I see is being renovated.
Yeah. So that's pretty far in the future, and we haven't had firm discussions around it. And so that's where my comment for the time being, it'll remain the same. I would venture a guess, based on what we've asked the state for, what we've asked the Commonwealth for, that that's probably outside this iteration of the comp plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Good question. John, good to see you again. I hope you're liking Williamsburg so far.
Love it.
Yeah, answered my Tribe Square question. So the other one I had was a residence-based one. I know that the college recently passed mandating students to live on campus in their first two years at William &amp; Mary, but then also the One Tribe, One Place will be taken offline next year. So do you expect those Residence Hall changes to impact the city at all?
No, because of the existence of facilities like Richmond Hall. So when Landrum Hall reopened, that opened up a lot of availability for other dorms. And when we take One Tribe, we'll be taking One Tribe Place, which is the former hospitality house, offline as a dorm for one year next year to do some structural improvements and some building system improvements just for one year, and then it'll open back up as a dorm. We expect to be able to service, we have the required beds to service the student need.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just related to that, one of the things that we have had to discuss at some length in this body as we're going through the comprehensive plan update is student housing in the city. And something I've just never had a firm handle on, and I'm hoping you can at least give us a ballpark figure percentage-wise, is 6,377 undergraduates. How many of those can currently be accommodated? If all dorms were online, in other words, if one wasn't taken off, how many can be accommodated on campus? Percentage currently...
Sure. So I think we're in the mid-70s for students that live on campus. I can get you a firm number. Caleb, if you have a better number, feel free to share it. But I'm thinking we're in the mid-70s.
1,500 choose to live off-campus.
1,500.
1,500 choose to live off-campus, and that's undergrad and grad students.
Oh, that's undergrad and grad?
I believe so. I read that in the Flat Hat recently. It was 1,500.
Ah, okay.
That seems low.
It could just be undergrad students.
Yeah, that'd be about 25%. 1,500 would be. Okay. And in terms of off-campus housing, or what I think of of off-campus housing, which is, well, is the former hospitality house included in that figure? Or is that considered off-campus?
It is. So anything that our Residence Life folks operate, which they operate, the residential portion of Tribe Square, they operate Richmond Hall on our behalf.
Right.
Landrum, or not Landrum, Ludwell, and One Tribe Place.
Okay.
So anyone that's part of Residence Life is, and that's how we manage a lot of our, I guess we'd call them off-campus facilities, that we treat as on-campus facilities for Residence Life purposes. Those are included in that number?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So when Richmond Hall came online, it came online with the idea that it would have a lifespan that had a point on the horizon, that it would end, you know, that there was a vanishing point of that. And on one of your last slides, the renovate additional dormitories, it sounds like we're in sort of a revolving door of renovations, that by the time we actually get to the end of that, we might be at the start of a whole other round of renovations.
So building system, when we say renovations, we're talking about sometimes just building system renovations, which are your HVAC, your plumbing and electrics. A lot of those systems have 20-year lifespans. And so we would, at some level, expect to be doing preventative maintenance, not quite capital projects, but we'd call them capital maintenance projects on our dorms. And that's primarily the on-campus living facilities. So while we include Richmond Hall in our Residence Life, I wouldn't necessarily include Richmond Hall. There's no, since that's owned by the Real Estate Foundation, there's no state funds that are going to go to that to renovate it. And then long-term, I would suggest that we probably will comport with the future land use in the city plans.
So just saying that a little bit differently from having that sink in my head, but because it is part of the foundation, there wouldn't be state funds for a renovation. So when its life expectancy runs out, then it would not be retooled because it would not have that additional source of funds.
It wouldn't be as part of the capital projects dorm renovations here. The Real Estate Foundation exists to support the college and its educational needs. If the college at that time still needs that bed space, then we will have, take a serious look at renovating that facility to serve the college. And again, that's our sole purpose for existing, is to help them and support them. So if that's a need of the college that somehow doesn't get mitigated by Midtown Row and our existing facilities, then we may have that conversation in the future. But that's within the city, and I'll be talking to the...
Sure.
...about that. Should we go down that road?
Sure. And this is actually the first time I've heard that there's been a change in policy from Residence Life or Student Affairs, that students are going to be required to live on campus for their first two years versus simply the first year. So we've been hearing conversation in our meetings that there are beds that have not been used, you know, surplus beds on campus, as we are also wrangling with the impact of students in neighborhoods and things like that. So do you have any sense of the calculus, since I just heard about this, I'm trying to get my head around this as well, the calculus of two years required, dormitories off-campus, how many, you know, do you see an increase in students on campus broadly, since on-campus includes Richmond Hall and all that other stuff, you know, by a couple hundred next year? Or do you have any sense of that?
Sure. So my sense, in talking to the Residence Life folks, and, you know, Caleb's a little bit more up-to-date than I am on that policy. I haven't gotten a brief from Sam yet on it. Could, I'm not saying it's not true. But my sense in talking to the Residence Life folks is we expect roughly a wash next year with One Tribe Place coming down for renovations and a couple of the other things we got going on around campus with our existing capabilities, both in the Real Estate Foundation, the regular foundation with Brown Hall, and the college.
Now we're, since we're talking about housing, one more question I had is, you know, there's such an impressive list of facilities that are going to be newly built or renovated on campus. I mean, it's, I won't say it's astounding, but it is, it's very impressive. But none of them is for housing. So is there a, does the college have a goal for how many students to house on campus? And I ask partly because I'm assuming enrollment is going to continue to creep up, maybe it's just a couple percent a year. Assuming enrollment continues to increase, will there be, just thinking long-term now, is there a target that the college is trying to hit in terms of on-campus housing? And will that become more difficult as enrollment increases?
So two things. So in the bottom left of this slide, the renovate additional dormitories, that's purposely vague.
I see.
And it is because, especially with living quarters, we may prioritize, our priorities may shift year to year on which dorm is going to come up next, based on conditions of the building systems within the dorm. And so, again, those projects are building system replacements, HVAC, et cetera. And as we get into the studies of those, we may determine that it makes more sense to rebuild something else, and a new capital project will be created.
Okay.
But under that umbrella of renovate the dormitories is where you'd find living space increases.
Okay.
And to answer your second part of the question, we think with the renovations we have going on and that are planned, generally, that we are going to be able to house the population that we expect to live on campus. And we think enrollment's going to stay relatively stable for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Actually, I thought of one final question. When the third parking study plan comes back, or the third study comes back, is the college open to constructing a new parking deck or parking resources? What is the goal of the plan? Because all these...
Sure.
...will certainly...
Sure. So the goal of the plan is, one, to identify the most efficient way to park folks on campus. And we have a number of different users on campus, as you know. We have faculty, we have staff, we have students, we have visitors. And we realize we don't exist in a vacuum. We have the neighbors of City of Williamsburg and Colonial Williamsburg, as well as individual neighbors that we're cognizant of. Currently, we are increasing in our parking utilization. In other words, we're starting to use more of the spots we have on campus, especially with some of the construction projects we have going on. For instance, the Phase One and Phase Two took, I think, 80 spots offline temporarily. So we're cognizant of that, and we expect that study to detail what's needed going forward, and that'll allow us to do some planning around, if it's a capital project, if it's a series of capital projects, if it's reconfiguring existing assets and reconfiguring where folks are assigned to park as well. So the short answer is, I think, most things are on the table, but we really are trying to be good stewards of the dollars there.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So has that parking study been commissioned at this point?
Underway.
And is it being, has it been crafted in coordination with, like, the parking studies that the city has done?
Same consultant, I believe.
Okay. So there's going to be this ability to bleed across the property line. No, a parking study that was done a couple of years ago at William &amp; Mary dealt with the exact, you know, and so if the solution is park in the neighborhoods, that was just like off the table, which was like, you know, there's an invisible line on that parking survey that really made it not a very effective...
So my understanding of the scope of the parking study is that it's a comprehensive campus parking study. So it's going to be confined to the campus, although we realize we have off-campus properties, we have the Real Estate Foundation properties, the Foundation properties, and we think that we will be able to make very good inferences about the off-campus stuff as well from the study. It's not confined to one particular area of campus. Again, it's a comprehensive parking study.
So, I mean, obviously, a lot of what we've talked about are things that are out of your hands, out of our hands, because they're actually part of the state, part of the college and all that. But with regard to parts that are under our purview, I mean, are there, just as I was asking the people from Colonial Williamsburg, are there areas of the city, areas that we could help or that you see are helping, you know, instrumental for you moving forward?
Sure. So nothing top of mind. Again, the Real Estate Foundation would probably be the most applicable party to this. And again, our goal is to support the college. So if through the series of capital projects, we determine that there's need for additional space outside of the college borders, then it'll be the Real Estate Foundation that looks for it. Again, there's nothing on the immediate horizon, but I can't think of anything top of mind that I would say this, you know, this would really help us out. But as those things come up, we certainly will engage the appropriate folks in conversation.
And I mean, just, if something is not the mysterious, oh, is there going to be another building? And obviously, you can't be talking about those things. But things such as, in my couple of years of serving as liaison to EDA, and now Jeff is our primary person on doing that, you know, we see other businesses. I mean, the foundation is a business in its activities in town, you know, coming before EDA, asking for help or other kinds of accommodations. And we look at this Tribe Square building that has been totally vacant for periods of time, is three-quarters vacant at this point in time? I mean, is there ways to facilitate your accessing city services as a business in town to actually help you and help us as a community by not having a totally vacant property there and things like that?
Sure. So I think the answer is yes and no. So we've talked a lot with the economic development folks about where that exists to help with some of the programs they have in place. But the folks that I think are going to end up there, we don't, there's nothing that's going to be required outside of some building permits. And then in general, I'm cognizant of the parking situation over at Tribe Square and our neighbors there as well, who feel like there might be some tight parking.
Yeah, Wawa has a really nice big sign.
Yes, seen it. And so we're continuing to work on that as well. So I think, in one way, the continual conversation between Colonial Williamsburg, us, and the city, and of course, the residents, about parking and how we handle the influx of visitors and other folks to our various properties, I think is a productive one and one which we're anxious to continue.
I have one last question. The Architectural Review Board doesn't really apply to some of the buildings that you're talking about. But I'm wondering, what sort of public input opportunity is there, has there been, should there be, in large buildings that are on state property but are clearly impacting our community on Jamestown Road? I may have missed the meeting, where they asked for public input on the buildings that I saw here today. But I wonder... But I wonder what sort of opportunity there is, and maybe a panel be created of some residents in the city to interact and engage with the college about what some of these buildings should look like, that will be on our corridors for a long, long time.
Sure. It's a great question. I'm aware that we have design guidelines and design specifications that have been approved. And, and the longer answer to that is, I'll find out and get back to you. I'm too new to have been through one of the capital projects where they've, where they've actually gone through in designs. And so I'm fairly sure some forum exists, whether it's with our Board of Visitors or otherwise, but I'll get you an answer.
Thank you. There is a college architectural review board that, that looks at all these things and does include some residents of the city. But I think your answer will be the one that Greg needs. But just to point out that it's not simply happening in a vacuum someplace. There had, there is review, regular review of everything.
Yes, and I didn't mean to imply we just are kind of, oh, it looks good, that type of thing. We're certainly not. There's a process and procedure to it. No, I'll, I'll get you the details on it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any final comments?
Well, thank you all.
Yeah, thanks, John. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So that brings us to an open forum. If anyone would like to come forward and bring anything to the commission, welcome to step forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one, is there any final comments, commissioners?
Okay, we found out today from Carolyn that we do not have a, when, a March Planning Commission hearing, but we will meet next year, next, I guess I'm hoping for next year, next month, this day, March 27, to see the two other large institutions of the city, the Williamsburg-Jamstown County Schools and the Williamsburg-Jamstown County Library. As a final point, I guess a personal privilege, I heard at the beginning of this meeting that this may be Heather's last meeting with us. Is this true? You're, we are fortunate that you're staying with the city, but you're moving to the Finance Department?
Yes.
So if we send our bills to you, you can, okay. Well, good luck, and thank you for your help.
Congratulations.
And as we, our previous assistant in that chair was Andrew for a year or so. We're assuming he's not coming back, but someone else will help us. But good luck. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to have you with us. And if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned. Thank you.